I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the Planning Commission interview being held just before our council meeting this evening. Before we start, do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item? Would we be looking on Zoom as well?
I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Great, okay. So, welcome to our candidate, Amanda Pekania Hickey. We will be interviewing one candidate tonight for one vacancy with the term ending on March 31st, 2027. Please limit your answers to one minute each. I will ask an opening question, and then other council members may ask additional questions. So, the first question. Tell us about your background that relates to the work of a planning commission.
Yeah, with pleasure, and thank you so much for having me tonight. I think the thing that probably most qualifies me is I do have an advanced degree in planning. I studied—oh, sorry, is that—how's that better? Okay, thank you, David. I did study city and regional planning at Cornell University, and I graduated about 10 years ago. Since then, I was really attracted to the community engagement side of that work, and I ended up going into international development, and I've worked a lot with local communities all over the world at this point on various issues, often rural and agrarian communities, which is part of what drew me to this area. But I'm excited to, at the opportunity to connect with the more technical side of the work. So, that's—I would say in a nutshell what qualifies me.
Great, thank you.
All right. So Amanda, provide an example when you worked to build consensus with a group representing multiple viewpoints.
Yeah, great question. I'll just use the most recent example. I've had the privilege through my work with the California Center for Rural Policy, which is at Cal Poly Humboldt, to work as the convener of an effort called Redwood Region Rise, which is our region's California Jobs First Initiative. It has a lot of names, but effectively, a major component of it is to create a new form of collaborative governance, to create more inclusivity in economic development in our region. And so, it involved bringing together tribal partners and four counties, many of which didn't have a history of working together. And there was, you know, a lot of concern over how resources would be divided, and whether or not, you know, there'd be dominant organizations or counties, and others would lose out. And so, I think I spent the better part of a year and a half just building trust in order to be able to build consensus, to move forward and get a strategic plan approved. And now, we are working—we're really testing, testing our skills in this department because we'll be granting some money to organizations through our effort. And so, being able to keep people at the table regardless of, you know, whether it goes exactly how they wanted to see it go is something that I'm practicing daily right now.
Okay, thanks for being here, Amanda. My question for you is, how do you handle disagreements when they arise in group deliberation, and how do you support the group to move forward?
Yeah, oof, well, it's never easy. But I think that one of the things that often derails groups is that the disagreement can kind of spiral out, right? And become about—either it becomes about more than just the original point of contention, or it's—there may be other concerns that arise, procedural, what have you. And so, I think—for me, I try to, when I'm facilitating, identify exactly what the disagreement is, what the group of people, you know, in the room can do about it in the moment, keep a firm grasp on the agenda, and just, I guess, comfort and ensure that people understand that what can't be resolved in the moment doesn't mean that it's being discarded or thrown away, but that a process will be created to move through it just with more time. So, attempt to keep the meeting on track and create room to resolve later.
What do you believe is the most significant planning challenge facing the city today?
I hesitate to give something so generic, but I think for most cities, probably across the states, and certainly in California, it's housing. And, you know, we're fortunate to still have somewhat affordable cost of living up here, but when we look at folks' income and cost of living as a ratio of folks' income, we know that there's a real squeeze, and there've been some really heroic efforts to get housing built, and I think we have to continue along that path.
Thank you.
So Amanda, the Planning Commission receives a lot of community input and feedback that at times may conflict with adopted city codes. How would this affect your decision-making?
Yeah, I think, without maybe referencing a specific example, I think that all input is useful, and it's up to the commissioner to decide how it is useful. And so, if you're hearing from a certain group of people over and over that they think something is wrong, however you know that the code is being applied correctly, maybe there are more questions that need to be asked around why this is coming up over and over, what's driving it, and find a way to have that conversation while still upholding, you know, the codes and the guidance and the things that structure work together. So, thank you so much.
You shared with us what you saw as some challenges. So, what do you think are kind of the most important opportunities for the Arcata Planning Commission coming up on the horizon?
Ooh, that's a—it's a good question. There's so many exciting and innovative things on the horizon for our region, which I imagine will find their way in front of the commission one way or another. I mean, they're talking about—I was reading about, you know, like the Arcata Cap project, and folks have all sorts of questions, like, is that even possible, right? What does that mean? And the recent adoption of the Gateway Area Plan, I think, is really exciting and opens new opportunities. And then, you know, we have continued questions around the developments in Humboldt Bay and what that'll mean for our town. So, yeah, all of these things on the horizon, I think, I would imagine would come before the commission at some point.
So I think you answered most everything. I'm just gonna see if there's anything that you would still like to share.
Um, no, you know, I just really appreciate the opportunity. I've enjoyed all the ways in which I've gotten to engage with Arcata City Government so far, and just looking to hopefully add value. I'm an analytical person, I'm a researcher, and I also really cherish opportunities to engage people around these issues and try to find ways forward. So, if I can be of use, I'm very happy to serve.
All right, well, thank you, Amanda. That concludes our Planning Commission interview, and I'd like to adjourn at this point. We'll take a couple-minute break to allow IT to switch over to our regular broadcast for our regular city council meeting. All right, good evening, and thank you for viewing the January 15th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Pursuant to the Arcata Municipal Code, Section 2003, "While the council is in session, order and decorum shall be preserved. No person shall by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings of the council, disturb any member while speaking, or refuse to obey the orders of the council. Any person making personal or impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous during a meeting, shall be forthwith barred by the presiding officer from further attendance at said meeting unless permission to continue by a majority of the city council." Personal accusations or remarks directed at the members of the public will result in you losing your opportunity to comment. Now, we will have our land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located are on the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join me now for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor White.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Mayor Stillman and Councilmember Atkins Alzar are absent, but we do have a quorum.
All right, so that brings us to ceremonial matters. Proclamation recognizing the Arcata High School Tigers for winning the 2024 CIF VI AA State Championship. This proclamation will be read by Councilmember Sarah Schaefer.
Thank you, everybody, and as an Arcata High alumni, I am very proud and happy to read this proclamation. Whereas, the Arcata High School Tigers football team achieved the highest level of success in the 2024 season by earning the title of CIF Division VI AA State Champions. And whereas, this achievement marks the first state championship in football in Arcata High's 130-year history. And whereas, this championship is the result of teamwork, dedication, and hard work by the players under the guidance and commitment of head coach Matt Majors and coaching staff, and the steadfast support of the cheerleading team, families, friends, Arcata High staff, and the whole community. And whereas, the Tigers demonstrated exemplary sportsmanship, perseverance, and skill throughout the season, overcoming challenges and embodying the spirit of our community. And whereas, the team's achievement brings pride and joy to Arcata High School and the city of Arcata, showcasing the incredible talent and dedication of our local student athletes. And whereas, this championship serves as an inspiration to all of us in the community, particularly our youth, to remind us that through hard work, commitment, and collaboration, anything is possible. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Arcata does hereby congratulate and extends its pride in the Arcata High School Tigers football team for this extraordinary accomplishment of winning the 2024 Division VI AA State Championship. The city commends each and every player, coach, cheerleader, and supporter for their contributions to this historic achievement for the inspiring representation of our community. Dated today and signed by our vice mayor, Kimberly White, and we have superintendent Roger McDonald, principal Kristen Fertiber, and our coach, Matt Majors, here to accept this proclamation. So come on up, folks.
I think—my name's Roger McDonald, I'm the superintendent at the Northern Humboldt Union High School District, which is—the Arcata High School is a big part of that. What I would like to say is I appreciate the gratitude and the appreciation for the work that Matt and our team did, but I really want to emphasize that while it's a football team winning a state championship, the impact that this had on our school and our school district was much more than that. It was the joy that it brought, the camaraderie that it brought, but also just really highlighted the work that Matt and his coaching staff did in support of our student athletes, and Amy, and our cheerleaders. It was just really a great group of kids and coaches that are really doing a nice job of, like, improving the culture of the high school and representing for our community. So, thank you very much.
So, thank you. I would like to say something on behalf of Councilwoman Atkins Alzar, who had to unexpectedly leave town, but is very sad that she is not here. She was looking forward to reading this proclamation. She's had several family members that have played for the Arcata High football team. I think both her father and her son Dante were quarterbacks, and so she just wants to extend her hearty congratulations. And as the mom of a freshman Arcata Tiger, thank you so much.
All right, so we have a proclamation recognizing January 2025 as National Mentoring Month. This proclamation will be read by Councilmember Meredith Matthews.
All right. Whereas, this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 140 years combined years of service to the youth in Humboldt County. Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast recognizes that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas, a mentor is a caring, consistent present who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas, research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 92% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say that they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas, youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas, our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, and many other who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success, whereas the future of Arcata rests on the success of its children and youth. Now, therefore, brieit complains that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes January 2025 as National Mentoring Month, and thanks our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The city council also calls on residents to help close the gap between availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with the Big Brother Big Sister, CASA Advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods Mentor. It takes little to be a big for National Mentoring Month. And this is signed January 15th, 2025, by our vice mayor, Kimberly White, and I am so excited to present this to the Big Brothers Big Sisters of North Coast Creative Director— executive director, sorry, Florence Parks.
Well, we said a lot already, right? We started off with just thinking about this evening, thinking about one form of mentoring. It's really a formal form, athletic mentoring. A lot of us don't think about how important it is that we go through things together, and when we do, how that is mentoring. And I love the stats that we get to share, because the truth is, most of the people in this room have had a mentor. Because those of us that reach our potential are often guided by those that came before us, that navigated those situations, and also those experiences, and helped us to grow our mindset to do even more. So, National Mentoring Month is a call to action. It's not just something fun to do just once. It's a moment for us to think about how mentoring can be the fabric and be embedded in the fabric of our community, how without mentoring what we might look at, look like as a community, and what we're individually doing to mentor those around us. So, some of us are already participating in mentoring. We are spontaneously mentoring, we like to call it. We see our young people, we give them visibility, we look in their eyes, and we let them know we care, that we love them, and it's essential. And some of us are mentoring our colleagues and our friends, and here in Arcata, we have the college. We have our Cal Poly and Cal Poly students. We couldn't do this work at Big Brothers Big Sisters without them. So, we're so grateful for the college and their students. This year, we want to focus on what we call positive experiences for youth. We talk a lot in our community about adverse childhood experiences, but it's the positive experiences that offset those. So, let's get out in the community and find opportunities to be engaged with our young people and uplift them, and show them those positive experiences. And it does that for us as well, because civic engagement is shown to pour back into us tenfold what we pour into the community. So, I will give you a formal invitation to—because we are bigger together. We are the last small affiliate in the state of California. Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast was started 55 years ago, and 42 years ago, our most integral fundraiser was started. Everyone can participate. Bowl for Kids' Sake is February 28th and March 1st, so we need you to come out, form a team, have fun in the name of mentoring. Even if you can't do a team by this year, we have a solution for you individual bowlers. Formal and informal mentoring are important, but we know the protective webs that our kids need happens in formal relationships. We have to make sure they have opportunities to these formal opportunities to be mentored. So, if they're not into sports, if they're not into all creative arts, if they're not into—if they're just sitting at home, our mentors are the ones that pull them out of those spaces and help them connect. So, I want to give a shout-out to a special mentor in this community. Her name is Melody, and she works at the after-school program at Arcata Elementary, and she mentors the children there every single day without a lot of things. So, I want to make sure we bring—those of us that can, bring her flowers. Tell her thank you now. Let's bind together and thank this mentor who has done so much for the youth here in Arcata. We appreciate your time today, and I'm sorry I didn't have the time clock, because I think I got to say everything I want. Thank you.
Thank you for those inspiring words to us. All right, so that brings us to the commission committee reports, and right now, the annual report for the Planning Commission will be tabled for a future meeting due to an emergency. And that will now bring us then to council and staff reports. We're going to receive an update from Equity Arcata's manager, Mo Harper DeSeer, regarding Equity Arcata. Can we receive an update from Equity Arcata, from Mo Harper DeSeer? Thank you.
Y'all can hear me? Perfect. So, good evening, members of the City Council and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on Equity Arcata and some of the equity initiatives within the City of Arcata and our broader region. My role as Program Manager focuses on three key areas: leading the Equity Arcata Partnership, advancing citywide diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility efforts through strategic planning and data analysis, and sustaining programs through funding initiatives. Our goal is to foster diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility across city operations, community spaces, ensuring that all residents, especially Cal Poly Humboldt students, feel welcome and supported. Equity Arcata was established in 2017 as a partnership between the City of Arcata, Cal Poly Humboldt, and community leaders to create a welcoming, safe, and racially equitable community. Through an MOU, a formal partnership was formed where the focus was to provide a welcoming, safe, and racially equitable community for faculty, staff, and students of color; to share the responsibility for resources and support to achieve that goal; to develop programs and policies within the City of Arcata; and to assist on projects to reach, consider, and include the entire community in project outcomes. Equity Arcata envisions in Arcata where Black, Indigenous, people of color, and historically excluded and divested residents can feel a sense of belonging and success. Following a year-long self-examination in 2022, Equity Arcata adopted a new structure in October of 2023 that maintains as our main focus, and this is supporting Black, Indigenous, and people of color centered and led initiatives through seed funding and partnerships, strengthening accountability in city and university operations, and convening spaces for community problem-solving and organizing. Recent highlights for the past year include partnerships with organizations like Central de Pueblo, the Harden Santuario, Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders, specifically with their Arcata Chinatown Project, Latino Net, and the HC Black Music and Arts Association. These collaborations have enhanced community safety, expanded language access, and fostered stronger relationships between the city and the community organizations. Our new structure has also allowed us to better plan and assess equity-focused events, strengthening ties with Cal Poly Humboldt and local groups. While equity work and social justice efforts share a commitment to addressing inequality, they differ in scope and approach. Equity work, such as Equity Arcata's initiatives, focus on localized, data-driven, and institutional changes to create sustainable progress. Social justice efforts, on the other hand, offer address broader societal issues through activism and cultural transformation. While both are vital, equity work lays the foundation for long-term systemic change by embedding fairness and accountability into institutions. A few ongoing methods of reaching the goals of Equity Arcata include, but aren't limited to, supporting events going on in Arcata, allocating resources to groups and organizations already working to support the communities they hold deep relationships with, hosting our Home Away From Home potlucks for Cal Poly students, a great opportunity to go be in community with young folks, like Mrs. Parks was saying, maintaining an online platform of local information, resources, and learning, creating and deepening relationships with local frontline organizations, and the cultural centers of Cal Poly Humboldt. We're hoping to soon host student workers, as well as convening space for intergenerational conversations that can aid in hosting and supporting cultural exchange and encouraging cultural networks within our city. One focus of Equity Arcata's City of Arcata Partnership will be reviewing policy and procedures through the introduction of a custom diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility This toolkit will assess and address inequalities in policies, practices, and culture, creating actionable strategies for improvement. It includes data collection, policy reviews, stakeholder engagement, and recommendations to embed equity in municipal operations. All staff and departments will participate in interviews, listening sessions, surveys, and professional development, which will open opportunities for community engagement through convening and listening. This toolkit is a structured process for assessing and evaluating an organization's policies, practices, and culture to identify barriers that disadvantage specific groups based on age, race, gender, economic status, ability, and other identities. The goal is to create an inclusive, fair, and equitable environment by addressing these barriers and developing actionable strategies for improvement. It provides the foundation for embedding equity into all aspects. The key components include data collection and analysis, policy and practice reviews, cultural assessments, stakeholder engagement, gap analysis, and then formulating recommendations into an action plan. By applying this toolkit, the City of Arcata can strengthen what works well, address areas needing attention, and create a foundation for equitable practices that foster meaningful, respectful relationships with historically excluded and diversity, diverse, excuse me, divested communities and beyond. The toolkit is essential to building a sound equity foundation before launching programs or creating new relationships. It ensures all involved are approaching this work with intention, humility, and accountability, which will help us understand the current state of our city. You cannot solve a problem or build trust without understanding. We'll build trust with communities that represent the global minority, excuse me, the global majority, and this built will be, this trust will be built on transparency and accountability. We will create effective targeted programs because we recognize that programs must address real needs, not assumptions, and it will establish accountability and measurable goals. Implementing this toolkit isn't about blame or shame, it's about learning and improving. It is not focused on any individual, but rather our work as a collective. It's proactive, and it's an effort that will build on trust, fostering stronger relationships, and creating equitable systems for everyone. Before we launch new programs, or we even attempt to deepen the relationships we have with the community, we must ensure that our foundation is strong, transparent, and accountable. So in conclusion, Equity Arcata is moving with intentionality to restructure our internal programming and workflows for best impact. That includes reconfiguring our relationship with the community and frontline organizations in attempts to deepen relationships and impact, and sharpening our internal structuring to allow for community participation and input. The toolkit will aid in creating a foundation of safety and inclusion, which will make the program more suited to include a large multitude of perspectives and ideas. At this moment, restructuring and realigning ourselves is a top priority, as Equity Arcata is working to deepen the paths of all the work that's been done up until now. And looking to the future, we can anticipate convening communities for input, surveying, and perspectives analysis, as well as creating a system to continuously engage on the topics that are on the minds of those in our community. Thank you for your continued commitment, and this is some of the places you can find Equity Arcata. We have a new office space at the Annex Building behind the Transit Center. We'll be tabling at Welcome Week at Cal Poly Humboldt. We are on social media at Equity Arcata. We have a beautiful purple and yellow website at equityarcada.com, and our next Home Away From Home potluck will be March 9th at the D Street Community Center. Thanks.
Thank you, Mo. All right.
And thank you, Mo, and I know that you're going to bring a lot of energy and skill and connections to this, and it's, we're really lucky to have you on board, so thank you a lot for being here tonight.
I just attended my first Equity Arcata meeting along with Councilmember Sarah last Monday, and I'm super excited and looking forward to moving forward under Mo's leadership and direction and moving us all to a better Arcata. All right, so we will be receiving an update now from the Director of Community Development, David Loyah, on the City of Arcata's housing projects and programs. Can we receive an update from the Director of Community Development? David, take her away.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Lucky for you, tonight, you don't just have me, you also have Jen, so this will be a much better presentation as a result of that. So we wanted to give you sort of a recap. We've, you know, we've been in production mode for a very long time now, racing from one thing to the next, and City Manager, and I think in consultation with the mayor, wanted to just kind of take a step back and look at, you know, what have we accomplished, and where are we going with our housing programs? And so the focus for tonight is really just an update of things that we've done, community development, the City of Arcata, the City Council, you know, over the course of the last year or two, and sort of projecting out into the future. A lot of this information is, you know, information that you already know, but we've done so much, it's probably information you may have also already forgotten. I did put together a summary that my entire staff helped pull together. I've handed that out to you before the meeting, and there are extra copies up here if anybody in the public wants to see a copy of that, but it goes into more detail than we'll be able to get into in this presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen, and we'll jump right into everyone's favorite topic, arena.
Good evening. So the city's made significant strides toward meeting the housing goals outlined in our housing element. We've, looking at the graph here, we've successfully exceeded the allocations for very low and moderate income housing, and are nearly complete in the low-income category as well, and we are still lagging a little bit behind in our above-moderate, above-moderate category here. One of the things that I wanted to point out, and I'm going to be bringing back an entire report about this at a future meeting in the next couple of months, so I'm not going to go over it too much, but our accessory dwelling units since the beginning of this housing element cycle have steadily increased, with approximately 20 new units added per year, and we also had some fairly large affordable and market rate housing projects over the last five years, and David is going to discuss some of those with you in our next couple of slides, so I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah, so this, again, the regional housing needs allocation that we have in our housing element, just want to remind the council and the public that these are kind of floor numbers, that if you don't meet these, then there are actually consequences that can happen, taking some of the city's authority-related land use planning away and handing it over to, to private developers. And so the fact that, you know, we've been so successful in this community at producing housing is not new, but to the extent that we've done in this particular housing element cycle is pretty impressive. So as Jen mentioned, we just wanted to take a quick look and recap on a couple of these projects. On the outside bounds here, you have the Grove project on the left and the Village Studios project on the right. These were the two Home Key projects that Council approved, I think in '22, the beginning of '22, and we're occupied, or '21, and we're occupied in '23. It was a total of about 140 units between those two. These projects are permanent supportive housing for, for folks who were formerly homeless. Most of these are individuals, but there are a couple of small families in these projects. And the really cool thing about this is that it's led to some new collaborations, and so in the Grove photo you see here, this RV is the Open Door Community Health Centers Mobile Medical, and so they've been able to go to the Grove, I believe they go on a weekly basis, and provide services there for residents, and so it's a great space for providing not only housing, but some health for some of our most vulnerable community members. In the center is the Sorrel Place. Again, this was a project that was a collaboration between multiple departments with financing that provided not only the housing that you see, which is 44 units of affordable housing, but also several projects throughout the community, including sidewalks, a new electric bus, Tank 1C, changes to 8th and 9th Street. And so what we're seeing as, you know, as we've weaned off of our, you know, former redevelopment budget and had to get more nimble and live in the way that we approach affordable housing, is a lot more, you know, collaborations that lead to greater benefit to the community, and so it's not just the residents that are benefiting, it's the entire community from these projects. Wrong button. On the market rate side, we've also seen quite significant investments. Here's a list of a couple of different projects. We're seeing some mixed-use projects, like you see in the middle photo here. This is on Giandoli Lane, as well as some more standard, you know, basic housing and some higher-end housing out in the Valley West area. In total, I'm not going to sum these up for you, but in total, you know, we've got well over, you know, 100, and these are all approximately market rate units here, and so these are the kinds of projects that you're seeing, some like the Mad River Parkway, that were actually approved over a decade ago, and they're finally starting to, you know, get their legs under them and produce the housing. And so it's exciting to see, not only on the affordable housing side, where we tend to shine in Arcata because of our dynamic grants team, being able to write these, and our community partners being able to build these types of projects, we're also seeing a lot of production in the market rate housing. We also wanted to address Cal Poly's project, and this is my role to talk about. I did check in with Mike Fisher with Cal Poly today, and they're actually three months ahead of schedule on this project. They'll be opening in a couple of different phases, and in total, there's a little over 900 units in this project. This is a project that will be, you know, exclusively housing students, but as we all know, there's a lot of, you know, single-family homes that are tied up in rental market right now. It's possible that this project could have an effect on, you know, loosening some of that up for single-family ownership, and so we're excited to see this project come to fruition, and more on that at the State of the City from Mike Fisher, I'm sure.
Okay, so I'll take over here. The city is excited to support additional affordable housing through the Rogers Garage Multifamily Affordable Housing Project, which is located near Jacobi Creek School. So some of the key details about this project, it's approximately 50 units of affordable housing, which is geared towards families. The city approved a pre-development loan to help the project move forward with PLHA. We're going to talk about some of that later on in our presentation, but we also applied for the Competitive Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant to secure additional funding for the project. This particular project, like all affordable housing projects, will need multiple sources of funding, so there will be an application for the low-income housing tax credit, for instance, and potentially other, other grant funding needed for that, but it's just represents another significant step towards addressing our community's housing needs as far as affordable housing goes. I didn't create a slide for this, but I did want to mention that we have, we have been in communication with a property owner in the Beryl District of the Gateway Area who is interested in developing their property for housing, so that's been really exciting for our planning team to have those communications. It's very initial. We don't have any details, you know, more to share out really with the community about that yet, but we have been, you know, reaching our, we have heard back from that property owner, so that's exciting. I'm going to go to the next slide. So we're going to get into some of our programs, and I'll start us off with our tenant-based rental assistance program. This is a really important program that assists our low-income residents be able to afford their rents and stay housed in our community. afford their rents and stay housed in our community. A lot of our recipients are seniors and disabled, you can see the approximate numbers here, I don't have the exact numbers, but this is, this is pretty, pretty accurate. We have 66 tenants that are assisted currently, and we are, we do have the ability to add some tenants right now from the two Home Key projects which we are doing. We've applied for an additional grant and are pending that, but we do believe will be successful. That would give us another three years' worth of funding. We were also successful in getting an extension to our current grant, which was very exciting because we didn't obviously want there to be a gap in that funding assistance for people who are on that program, so we have our, we have the ability to use that grant through October, so that's, that's definitely exciting. One of the things that we wanted to point out too, was that we've had a lot of success working with the housing authority, and we really appreciate them working with us. Because our program is grant funded, it's timelined, so it's based on when we get those grants, and those timelines don't always match up, so they're really, really working with our recipients to get them onto their housing choice voucher program, which is a long-term program, and so it's just fantastic to be able to have them as a partner. So we have two, this is something that's really exciting, we have two mobile home assistance programs right now, which is not something that we've had in the past. Cal Home, specifically, this is the first Cal Home award that we've had. It provides funding for income qualified buyers to purchase mobile homes. One of the challenges that we are finding with this particular program is there's not a lot of primary lenders, and Cal Home requires that we be in secondary position, so we can't fund the full, the full amount that the buyer may need. So we're working with our local credit unions, trying to find a solution to that. It was a really small grant, but our hope is that with being successful, we'll be able to apply for future grants and open it up not just to mobile homes, but to, to, just to single family buyers as well. The, oh, the next one is the Moore Grant. The Moore Grant is another exciting program, and this is a one-time funding, it doesn't look like they have additional funding, but it'll be dependent upon the state, but the city was successful in receiving funding for mobile homeowners who need rehabilitation, or maybe ADA accessibility or energy efficiency upgrades, to get grants to do these upgrades to their home. We have about 30 applications that we've received to date, and we're starting to do grant agreements and contractor agreements with the first ones that are ready for this program. It is a grant, it is not a loan, so that's something that we're really trying to reiterate to those folks that are concerned and maybe don't feel that they could afford a loan, especially with rehabs on a mobile home, you know, it's, it's not something that sometimes goes up in value, and so it can be really concerning. We do think that we're going to be able to assist all the applications we've received to date, so yeah, that's an exciting program as well. And then, something that our staff is working on diligently, which is again going to be coming back to you here in the next couple of months, is our pro-housing designation. The State Housing and Community Development Department rolled out this incentive program for jurisdictions that are increasing the availability of housing and removing barriers to housing development. We were not eligible to apply until after our general planning gateway was adopted, which has happened now, and so we're working on our draft application, and we'll be bringing that to city council in the next few months. One of the great things about this program is, there is a incentive funding for, for this, but it also gives incentives and, not incentives, but it gives extra points on some of the grants that we already apply for, so we definitely want to get that designation as soon as possible, and we'll be bringing more on that soon.
The, the next program we wanted to remind you of was our permanent local housing allocation. These are funds that were generated through basically a tax on property sales that was collected at closing, put into a pot, and then those funds were allocated throughout the state based on a formula, and so these, these were, you know, they're kind of periodic funds that come in, and, you know, it just depends on what the sales activity is in your region and what the sale prices are, what the, what funds are generated for this program. And so we've been pretty successful at working to, to expend these funds. If you don't use them, you lose them, you have to give them back to the state, and the first project that we funded with the PLHA funds, as you may recall, is the Rogers Garage pre-development loan, and so we, we provided Danco Communities with a little bit of funding to help them do some site assessments on, on the property, and again, that was one we talked about earlier, is a future housing project, you see down in the right left corner here. We also recently requested, because we're running out of time on our previous year's PLHA funds, we requested to transfer some of these funds into unsecured notes for the Home Key projects to ensure that their operations can continue and that the, the permanent supportive housing services will be permanent and, and available, and so that's what we used the rest of our last couple of years' worth of funds for. And then we have a new allocation that's coming, and we'll be bringing the owner occupied rehabilitation guidelines to you shortly, to help support folks to do rehab projects on their homes, stick-built homes. We used to have a really robust rehab program, and so this is sort of our way of doing a gentle entry into trying out the program again. It's, it's really helpful for people who are on the lower income spectrum that own their homes, that, you know, are just, can't get ahead enough to, to make those needed repairs, and it really improves, you know, neighborhoods as well, so we're looking forward to that program, and you'll see that soon. Do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the guidelines for that program will be coming to you for approval, I think, in the next month?
Soon.
Soon.
Yeah, very soon. Apparently the folks outside approve that program, they're honking for us. And then the, the other grant that we received recently that was really high impact for, for our community was the HUD Pro Housing Grant. Not to be confused with the Pro Housing Designation, which is a state designation, the HUD Pro Housing Grant was actually... Okay, there's, I'm going to take a look.
Yeah, that would be good.
I will continue, I think someone's having a mental health crisis outside, but we'll, we'll go ahead and continue with this. Sounds like plenty of people are engaged in resolving that right now. So the HUD Pro Housing Grant, the HUD Pro Housing Grant was a million dollar grant that was awarded to the City of Arcata, and as you recall, when we updated our general plan, there was sort of an open question as to how we were going to complete the updates to the rest of our, our code, and the HUD Pro Housing Grant really came together and, and will help us to finish that, so we're proposing to prepare objective design standards or a form-based code for the Valley West area. Council identified that as a high priority. The Planning Commission recently looked at expanding the footprint from the Valley West proper into all of the areas that were designated in the general plan update as commercial mixed, and so this will be a, probably an expanded program will be their recommendation, but that'll be a, a critical component to streamlining development and of the types that we want to see in Arcata in that area. We'll also use those funding, that funding to update our land use code, make it consistent with the general plan. And then another exciting program that we're, we're looking forward to spinning up is the accessory dwelling unit loan program, as you may recall. I, I want to pause for just a second, because we're kind of just rolling through each of these programs and each of these projects and just talking about them like they were just easy to do. I truly believe that the HUD Pro Housing Grant would not have been awarded to the City of Arcata if not for the decades of work that the city council has done to promote affordable housing and, and streamline housing. It's been a goal of ours for as long as I can remember in our budget cycles to streamline the permitting process, streamline the permitting process, and we do something new almost every year to, to accomplish that, and it's being recognized in these kinds of grant awards. And then lastly, I just wanted to report on our short-stay vacation rentals. This isn't technically a housing program, but the council was very interested in setting a cap on the total number of, of housing units that are involved in this activity, because it does take away from permanent housing that could be housing our residents. And so currently, in our short-stay vacation rental program, we have 93 of the non-exempt permits, those are the permits that are limited to 100 as the cap. We did have a dip for a while, it was, so it's, if you recall, when you adopted the regulations originally, we were over 100, it's dropped down below 100. For a while, it got down into the 70s, and now we're back up to about 93. There are also 54 exemptions. You recall, you, you allowed for exemptions for people who lived on the property where the short-stay vacation rental was, or if it was a historic resource, a couple of different exemptions. We have 54 permits that are issued for those exemptions, so in total, 147 housing units involved in short-stay vacation rentals in the City of Arcata. So that's kind of the summary, what we wanted to provide as a update report for you. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm just in awe. I mean, this is just incredible, from the Rena numbers of how ahead of the game we are, and I know we will get there with our moderate housing, to our grants for like, I'm just thinking of Lazy J, 250 seniors, some of them are on, well, many are on fixed incomes, and so we're keeping these houses, mobile homes, from going substandard and losing potential housing, and the fact that we're going to be working, hopefully, with one of our local credit unions so that we can buy a couple, you know, so folks can buy a home, you know, and Rogers Garage, the renditions, I'm super excited, can't wait to see the groundbreaking for that, and then I was curious, the owner occupied rehab program, do we know how much that might be yet, or, I mean, I know it's new.
We, we have about $180,000 in the PLHA program that are identified for that, and that's not going to go far, that's going to be like two or three units, maybe four, but I'm also looking at this as like a pilot program, and we may be able to find additional sources of funding to support this program.
Great, yeah. Staff, you guys are amazing, keep on doing what you're doing. Okay, so we are going to receive an update regarding the Arcata House Partnership from Executive Director Darlene Spoor. So can we have an update from Arcata House Partnership?
We can, we have a little presentation for you.
Great.
Arcata House Partnership is a housing and supportive services provider, serving Humboldt County since 1991. Our mission is to provide advocacy for and services to the homeless and food insecure with compassion, dignity, and empowerment. We provide a variety of support to our most vulnerable community members. We reach out and connect people to what they need, be it food support, access to local providers, shelter, or permanent housing. I was homeless. AHP reached out to me and believed in me when I didn't believe in myself. They gave me support, shelter, and the kindness I needed to be safe and grow as a person and a parent. Now I work at AHP where I can make that same difference in other people's lives. The One Stop is the starting point for all of our programs. This is where we connect our participants to the services based on the needs they've Our shelter programs offer people a safe place with meals, showers, and case management while they look for permanent housing. Once people achieve permanent housing, we offer services to support them in retaining that housing and becoming stable. The One Stop is a hub for our organization. This is where people can access our programs, get connected to resources, and receive service. Our outreach team is based in this building, and the staff here provide a multitude of services, from showers and phone charging to mail distribution and preparing documents for program eligibility. In 2024, the annex serves 696 people at the service window. Our food service program is also based at the One Stop. We glean food from local stores and restaurants and distribute that food through pantries across the county. Last year, we gleaned 416,000 pounds of food that went to hungry people rather than ending up in a landfill. Our food service program also began teaching cooking classes across our programs and created a cookbook with affordable and simple recipes people can make regardless of their housing status. In our housing programs, we have rapid rehousing domestic violence. This program is short-term, prioritizing getting the participant to safety through housing. Rapid rehousing is for people experiencing homelessness, a short-term program designed to house people quickly with rental support and case management. Permanent supportive housing is long-term housing assistance to help people get and retain housing. AHP owns two affordable housing properties. Cameyak Place in Eureka is 16 units of affordable housing made in partnership with the Yurok Tribe. The second is The Grove, 60 units of affordable housing with onsite case management and other amenities like laundry and a community room. In our shelter programs, we have our adult shelter, a low-barrier congregate shelter where participants can rest and work towards their housing goals. Family Shelter consists of safe houses across the county where families have stability to rebuild while looking for permanent housing. Next up is transitional housing for people exiting incarceration in partnership with Humboldt County probation. Extreme Weather Center opens when we have inclement weather, like heavy rains, high winds, and below freezing temperatures. Last year, we served 203 people, opened for 36 days, and provided 299 bed nights. In 2024, we served a larger number of clients with a higher level of needs. We had a 97% retention rate across our housing programs, and provided 10,014 bed nights throughout our shelters. We have memorials for those we've lost and give people the opportunity to die with dignity in their own home. For holidays, we provide community meals, gifts, and connection for the people we serve. Socialization includes courses on good tendency, community activities, clubs, and events. Arcata House Partnership staff attend monthly trainings to provide the best support possible for the people we serve. As an organization, we're on a number of committees locally, statewide, and nationally to ensure we are up to date on the best practices and approaches in our field. Our administrative office will be moving from 11th Street in Arcata to 4677 Valley West Boulevard. We are also starting some new and exciting projects. Adult Shelter Expansion. We were awarded 3.78 million from the Encampment Resolution Fund to transform our current shelter, so we can offer non-congregate sleeping spaces that accommodate a wider variety of participants, from couples not being separated to people coming in with their pets. Family Shelter Expansion. Day One Families Fund awarded 2.5 million that will allow us to expand our family shelter services, creating a multi-family shelter with private rooms for women and children.
What our staff are able to accomplish on, just because of their heart and their commitment to our community is amazing to me, and it's always an honor, I get choked up because I am so proud to be the face of everything that we do. I'm sorry, I didn't, it didn't say that we partner with the city for The Grove, we'll fix that before it goes public. What we do is amazing, what our staff does, our small staff, is amazing, but we are only one part of the homeless service continuum, and I really want to say to our community, we talk about partnerships, we talk about mentorship, we talk about affordable housing, all of those things matter to the people that we serve, and the people we serve are all the same people that you serve, right? Our, our lines cross. Our our lines cross all over. And so I think it's just really important that we recognize that we are only one piece, that when extreme weather shelter happens, we do our best and open as many beds as we can, but we're only one part. There's a whole continuum across our county that we work with, that the city works with, that lots of people in this room and other people who are watching tonight work with. And so because of that, I want to say thank you to all of you for your support, for your guidance, for your funding. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you for all the work you do in our community. All right, so that brings us to our twenty-twenty-four year-end review from City Manager Merritt Perry. May we receive an update from the city manager, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor White. Well, it's it's kind of a tough act to follow. There were some great presentations, and Darlene and I see you going, but thank you so much for coming tonight. We asked Darlene to be here. It's really great to take the opportunity. There's been a lot of questions from the public, what's the city doing? And and we just thought it would be a good time tonight to remind the community and the public that of the effort that goes out on behalf of staff. And so I really, I want to thank Mo for talking about what we're doing with Equity Arcata. There's a lot of work right now. There's a lot of concepts and ideas, and she's really going to take a lot of those concepts and ideas that are that are not not haven't been implemented yet and really put those into a working structure and tangible activities and relationships that the city can benefit from. Additionally, just a few comments on the presentation by David and Jen. The City of Arcata Community Development Department takes, they obtain a lot of grant funding from the state and feds, and they put it towards projects that directly benefit housing. They prevent homelessness. They promote more housing, low, low, low-cost housing and low-income housing. And I think they do a better job of that than any other jurisdiction in the community. It takes so much time and effort to administer those grants, and the way that Jen puts that together and David, they work, the whole team they have over there puts those projects together, they make it look easy, and they ran through so many of them, but they really, it really is an example of a team that is working very hard and very passionate about bringing those types of projects to the community. And then lastly, just like to thank Darlene. It's always great to be reminded of all the things that Arcata House is doing, and I know that Darlene's very passionate about that. We had a good discussion at our homeless services working group meeting today, and it's, it's, it's always good to be reminded of what their activities are. I just, I do have a brief PowerPoint. What traditionally the former city managers have done is they put together a year-end list of accomplishments. So I printed out a list. I think there's about sixty-two things on there. There's some copies over at our city clerk's desk if anybody wants a copy. I gave some to the council. And I just wanted to highlight the the top few of them and some of them that I think are pretty important to just, just highlight. Can you see that presentation? There we go. So on the right, it's just, it's a copy of the list, but really, I just want to highlight a few of them. Some of these projects I'll highlight, these are ones that were completed this year, so accomplishment. We have so many more that are in progress. And I'd just like to say, many of these projects take years to do and decades. I've been at the city for about five months, so I can't take credit for these projects, but I really can celebrate them and and kind of point to the staff that have worked hard to deliver those over the last several years. A big one, maybe the council deserves a lot of the credit for providing the direction to the Community Development Department. It's no small task to get a, a general plan done. It's a guiding document for the city for twenty years and how the city will develop. It's hard to predict what will happen in the future, and I think one of the highlights of this general plan is that it's very adaptable and and widens the types of uses that can happen in the city. So as the city grows, there's going to be more things that can be done that that couldn't have been other, done otherwise. And some of the primary complaints that we see when it comes to land use and and the types of projects that can be done is, why can't I do this kind of project? So I think this general plan will open up the types of projects that can be done on people's property and create more opportunities for housing, more opportunities for businesses. And it'll be interesting to see how this develops over time. And a lot of people think all of a sudden, there's going to be seven-story buildings all throughout the whole area. It's, it's not going to happen that quickly. Sure, things could speed up and we could see things change, but generally, things happen over a slower period of time. I think there's been a couple of the taller buildings, Sorrel Place and the one across from the call-up, but that's been two over, I think, ten years, and so it has.
Could I just, I know a lot of people are looking over here, just those who don't know, there is a presentation on this right over here.
Okay, and there's one on the other monitor.
Oh, quite perfect, sorry.
Yeah. Another big one, Old Arcata Road. This is a project I sat on the Humboldt County Advisory Technical, Humboldt County Association of Governments Technical Advisory Committee. I remember City of Arcata passed Public Works Directors talking about this in the early two thousands. It's amazing to see this finally come to fruition. This is a project that's been over twenty years in the making, and on the left is the photo simulation, and on the right is the actual project built. It's amazing to see a project like that built. And and copies of this are over on the city clerk's desk if somebody does want those on the corner. So a lot of credit goes out, this was, this was a team effort on all of our departments, Community Development, Engineering, Environmental Services. This was an all-play and really got brought home by our Engineering Department. Reconnecting Communities Grant, we, the city was awarded a Reconnecting Communities Grant in twenty-twenty-four. The grant award's going to be twenty-five million. A lot of people think, okay, Arcade is going to build a land bridge, but it's really not that. It really, it, it could be that, but really, it's, it's the selection of a community. And and there's, there's really the goal to put the question out to the community, what are the transportation needs of the community? The areas of focus are the southern area along Samoa Boulevard, the central part where that the CAP proposal was put out, and then the northern area around Valley West. So there's going to be a robust community outreach piece, and that's just one concept, the CAP, but it very well could be matching funds to complete many of the other projects at the other locations, too. So that's a, going to be a great opportunity, and that's going to be starting in earnest in the, in the near future with our special project manager in the Engineering Department. Another big one, David talked to this, talked about this briefly with, and how some of the funding came to this project through, I think it was the Sorrel Place, but Tank One C, it might seem like it's just a water tank, but when you reflect on the fires in Los Angeles and the loss of water, when you add twenty percent to your water reservoirs, it's a pretty big deal. And our, our, our staff is not stopping there. They're, they're on the verge of awarding a fifteen-million-dollar project to replace the city water lines, and that's only phase one. So there's some really big projects to go towards water resiliency, to allow for future growth, to increase reliability, and then to promote water conservation and reduce losses from leaks in some of these older pipes. And then our environmental services and recreation and engineering departments and plant and community development also, it's, it's very difficult to build new park projects. General funds usually aren't that easy and available for new parks, but Amazing Park at Carlson Park, we've talked a lot about that at council meetings and had ribbon cuttings, but a lot of new facilities there, Pickleball Court Playground area, allowing for food, space for food trucks, and one of the only river access parks that the city has. And then also, a new playground that was put in place at Redwood Park, which was probably long overdue, but being much appreciated. But it's a wonderful park, and you can see those in, in the pictures there. And this is one that, that both Jen and David already talked about, but the rental assistance, it really is, in, in the Moore Program, these are projects that really, and programs that really prevent homelessness. I've talked a lot with Darlene about, you know, there's, there's projects to house, you know, homeless, unhoused people, but it's tougher to, to prevent them from getting there in the first place. And so I think it's important to highlight the example of the funds that are going to mobile home rehabilitation and the rental assistance that's going to families, and we expect to be able to continue in the future. I think that's huge. And then also, ongoing support of the Home Key Projects, trying to make use of those PLHA funds before they disappear and putting them towards those Home Key Projects rather than seeing them revert to the state. And then lastly, a pretty big accomplishment, the passage of Measure H. It's always a big question if a city passes a tax measure and the, the voters approved it. On the right, you can see some of the priorities that the voters have, conserving forests, preserving natural areas. They want to see public spending disclosure and maintain programs to provide mental health response, repairing and maintaining local roads, requiring funds to be used locally, providing homeless services, repairing outdoors, storm drains, streets and roads. So there's a lot of those priorities, and we have projects and programs in place that will address a lot of those priorities, and we'll be able to put that money to good use. So thanks to the voters. And then our Arcata Police Department, maybe not as much of an accomplishment, but it is an amazing accomplishment of the city to have a fully-staffed police department. The competition for police officers is, is huge, and the council has put some money there to be able to fully staff our police department, to be able to have community-oriented policing that they've done with the Arcata community, or the ACOT team, and we have a fully-staffed patrol right now, and we have a fully-staffed detective bureau, and they're putting an increased focus on the community. So really, I'm happy to be able to have that fully-staffed police department. These are the most recent pictures of our team. They're from a collaboration that the city's done for over twenty years. We, we partner with the North Coast Children's Services to, and our, our staff donate to get gifts and things that families need and to dedicate them. So it was, I had the most number of staff in those picture, of pictures, and so it was great to be able to use those. But this team is an incredible team. They're very dedicated and service-oriented, and they really work well together between departments, and that's one of the things that attracted me to the city, and it's, it's great to be able to summarize some of the accomplishments that they've had this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you have any questions or comments?
Just we, to echo that, we truly do have incredible staff, and everybody that we get to work with are just so knowledgeable and amazing and friendly and easy to work with and always want to help us out and help us get the information we need. And so just thank you, Merritt, and all of our department heads and everybody else, you know, that supports council and helps us out. So, thank you, guys.
And I also want to say, I really appreciated all of these staff updates. I really appreciate these periodical reports. I think that this is something that we should kind of make a habit to, at every meeting, have one or two departments kind of talk about all the great things that we're doing, because people should know all the hard work that the staff puts in, and I thank you so much.
Yeah, and we're happy to bring those back.
Yeah, oh, sorry. I was going to say, great way to start the new year, too, just to get us all on the same page.
Thank you.
I concur. I did want to say, I'm particularly super excited about the Reconnecting Communities Grant, and in particular, my passion being Valley West, two-ninety-nine and one-oh-one, just Valley West being geographically separated from main Arcata. This is going to be wonderful to reconnect us, or connect us, I should say, perhaps for the first time. And also to say that we are fully-staffed, and people out in Valley West are thrilled to have a designated police officer out there now all the time. And that pickleball court, good luck in getting a spot. It's always full. It's wonderful. And if you don't have any pickleball rackets, Kuna went ahead and got six that we will put like a little library lending racket and ball, so please go check that out. Yeah, anyway, so here we go to other council and staff reports. So what do we have? Anything else with staff?
I think that's it for staff reports.
All right, all right. So I will start with Meredith.
All right, thank you. I'll keep it brief because I know that we've already talked for, had a lot of staff reports, and people are eager to speak. It's been a minute since we've had a council meeting, so I just want to know that I recently attended my HWO Bay meeting. We have an update on the RFP for Organics Waste Processing, and that's something that I'm super excited coming down the pipeline, and I'm really looking forward to making that happen. I was today appointed vice chair of LAFCO, so I'm really excited. We got a presentation from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District today with an update, and some of the updates that we'll have on a calendar year will be Scotia, the Fair Haven, just really interesting things coming down the pipeline, and I'm just really excited to be a part of that and get a new skill set and new knowledge. I'm excited to go to the Arcata House Partnership Board meeting tomorrow. That'll be my first day with that assignment. And then next week, I am headed down to Sacramento for the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Committee meeting. Some of the things that our Community Development Team was talking about as far as policies that influence housing and streamlining procedures, those are a lot of things that this policy committee talks about. So I'm really excited to be a voice for our community, and I think I can't read the rest of my handwriting, so I think that's it.
I really don't have much to report. Our CEA meeting is next week, so the only new exciting thing at the Redwood Coast Energy Authority is our new executive director, Beth Burke, started at the beginning of January and has really hit the ground running. So I'm looking forward to already getting to work with her a little, but continue doing that. And my year as chair of that board is maybe coming to a close, too, and so that's been a great learning opportunity and a great experience overall, but that's all I really have to report.
Congratulations on the LAFCO. Pretty exciting. Let's see, I wanted to remind folks the state of the city tomorrow. You still can get tickets at the door. That's ten-thirty to twelve-thirty at Playhouse Arts. It's free for chamber members and fifteen dollars for non-members. There will be light refreshments provided by Redwood Capital Bank before the program, and a short question and answer will be hosted after the program, so go check it out. Great presentations, city updates, and some food. Let's see, I attended a meeting with Brenda Perez of Central de Pueblo with our city manager, Merritt Perry, and Councilmember Stacy Atkins Salzar to discuss the five requests that Central de Pueblo had asked for one of our recent meetings. Last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to attend the bilingual listening session headed up by Brenda Perez with Central de Pueblo to address violence, racism, harassment, and also to talk about anti-racism policies in our Arcata publics, in our public schools. It was held at Humboldt County Office of Education, Secroy Room, and parents, teachers, superintendent staff came together to discuss what's happening in the schools, policies to protect our immigrant children and their families, to address bullying, harassment on campuses. Sadly, it is happening. So there were many organizations there to support folks. First Five Humboldt, Kumra Humboldt, Mary Ann Hykins with English Express, RCRC Redwood Coast Regional Center, St. Joseph Health System, Cal Poly Humboldt CR, were all there to lend support. And what was really cool is that there were these little translation devices that you could put in your ear for English speakers. I'm working on my Spanish, but my understanding that there, this will be hopefully one of many ongoing sessions with Central de Pueblo. I also want to remind folks that Arcata is a sanctuary city, and also want to remind folks that Kuna is offering a safe space for our Latin community at our Resilient Hub Family Resource Center out in Valley West. Also, if you haven't already done so, don't forget to take the Valley West Community Center survey, which is found on the city's website under Valley West. It's also on the city's Facebook, social media, or you can go to Kuna website at kunacommestgether.com, and the survey link is on our homepage. And also on the note of Valley West Community Center, there will be a Valley West Community Center Visioning Meeting, Saturday, February first, first, at one PM for English speakers and four PM for Spanish speakers, and that will be held at forty-seven-hundred Valley East Boulevard at the Kuna New Resilient Hub. It will be a catered event. There will be childcare onsite. All are welcome. Hope to see you there. And then finally, Kuna is offering a free ballet terapia, which is dance therapy, and also yoga classes, every Tuesday for free at six-thirty with Dr. Jorge Matias and Heidi Hopkins. All are welcome. Bring your children. And I think that's all I have. And that brings us then to Oral Communications. City Council Values Your Comments. Public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to fifteen minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three-minute of time for your public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under item thirteen, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There will also be a time to provide public comment specific to each item when that item is being reviewed by the council. Please make your way up to the podium. Raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in by the phone and wish to make a comment.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. Today is January fifteenth. It is the actual birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I remember this because my brother got married on this day in nineteen eighty-three, but also because I arrived here in Humboldt County to live thirteen years ago on this day, when they were having the Bowl of Beans event that they had often had in honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, and thinking about him a lot these days. Last year, at the ceremony in Eureka, the theme was, it starts with me. And I will continue to try and be active and present here in this community in coming to these meetings as often as possible, giving my public input. I was at the County Board of Supervisors meeting. And I will continue to try and be active and present here in this community and coming to these meetings as often as possible, giving my public input. I was at the county board of supervisors meeting last Tuesday and I reminded them of the hummingbird story, of the hummingbird and all the animals in a big huge forest fire. And the other animals ran out and were shivering in great fear, great fear. But the hummingbird was going to the water and coming back and trying to douse the fire. And the other animals were saying, why are you doing this? And the hummingbird said, I am doing my part and I'm doing what I can. And I brought this weight today because there's a lot of things weighing on my right now on my mind and my heart. And one of them is the fires in Southern California from where I'm at. Others is what's going on in the Middle East and the deaths of the children and their families. And I will keep coming here and being brave and I ask all of us in this community to be brave.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Come now. Step up to the podium. Going once, going twice. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I do have hands raised on Zoom. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your names. Sarit, please go ahead.
Hi, hello. Dear Mayor and council members, I wish to express my opposition to the idea that Arqta becoming a sister city with one of the cities of Gaza Strip. This idea is being promoted by terrorist organization that are promoting a radical agenda aimed at destroying Western countries. The funds that they are seeking obtained through the sister cities project will end up with Hamas and be used for terrorism, just like other aid funds that have reached them over the years. A sister city should be share common values with Arqta. What shared values do we have with the people of Gaza? This is a culture that encourage death, rape, murder and bloodshed, a culture that should be condemned, not allied with. If you wish to support victims of war, I suggest signing an agreement with Kibbutz Berry, which was almost entirely destroyed and whose residents are still rotting alive and suffering in Gaza. They lived for peace. They helped the people of Gaza, gave them jobs and fought for better future. What did they get in return? They were the first that were killed. Do we want that here in Arqta? Thank you.
Tomorrow, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to acknowledge today, it's really bittersweet for me personally as Israeli. And I want to ask to give a window to see how is this is also psychological torture and manipulation and continuation for the abuse of these hostages that have been 467 days for today. I'll continue to pray for the next 45 days to go as planned for all of them to come home. In the same time, I wanted to go to the topics that last city meeting like Council Sarah, you know, she was like suggested that we're going to look in other city what they practice in other city. She had the nerve like to come and to talk about city like bolder cities that have like, you know, she wanted to adapt like the idea that we adapt like with the same with the people like to look in this kind of cities. But this sister city have agree, you know, they pass a resolution about antisemitism. So perhaps she should suggest that the people of Arcata, that she is actually serving all of them, including the Jewish people in Arcata, that pass a resolution against antisemitism and not to be just biased and talking to like her bias, like to her base because she knows herself and she claimed to me that she cannot really pass like a resolution with a terror organization that is called Hamas. Today Hamas is ruling like ruling like Gaza and United States of America City by law cannot pass an agreement with a terror organization. So it's time for us like to tell the truth if you are talking.
Okay, you've reached your time limit. Thank you for your comment.
Amy, please go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Amy Bow Wickland, local Arcata resident, homeowner. I'm one of many people who supports the sister city in Gaza and I wasn't going to make a comment tonight because there was a ceasefire declared, which is wonderful news, even though we're all waiting for the other shoe to drop. It does give people a chance to catch their breath. But I can't sit here and listen to those of us who are advocating for a cultural exchange with the people of Gaza being called terrorists. That's absurd. We're not terrorists. We're compassionate people who want to relieve suffering of innocent civilians in Palestine. And a sister city relationship with them would help would help show our support for them. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more?
I see two more hands raised. Scott, please go ahead. Scott, it looks like you might be muted. Can you please unmute yourself? Um, Scott, I'm gonna try one more time.
Is that better? Is that better now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Anyway, why not to help the people in Gaza, why not establish a stronger relationship with something like the World Kitchen, World Central Kitchen or something like that? Because, you know, Hamas is a very dictatorship-like organization and they're very, very have very, I would say abusive relationship with the population of Gaza. And why not just help the people of Gaza without involving an organization that started the conflict, has a long reputation of being abusive to citizens that live there? It just isn't a good fit for Arcata.
Thank you, Scott. There's one more person with hand raised. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your names. Sanai, please go ahead. Sanai, oh.
Hello.
I can hear you.
Hi. Yeah, it's actually not Sanai. This is Eamon and I'm using his computer. First, I want to acknowledge that I'm grateful for the progress that has happened in the Israel Gaza conflict today. Finally, what's left of the hostages can start to come home. It's also tragic because it's really too late and so many lives have been lost on both sides as politicians play games of ego. Next, I would like to address the propaganda that's been directed against Zionists here in Arcata and across the world. The word Zionist has become a slur. People who present themselves as pro-Palestinian use the word Zionist with so much hate and vitriol, often without even really knowing what it means. It is a racist against Jews, also known as antisemitic. I hope that the people of Arcata can see the connection. Zionism is derived from the word Zion referring to the biblical land of Israel. In the late 19th century, Zionism emerged as a political movement to reestablish a Jewish state in Israel, the ancestral homeland of the Jewish people. Today Zionism refers to support for the continued existence of Israel in the face of regular calls for its destruction. Anti-Zionism is opposing is opposition to Jews having a Jewish state in their ancestral homeland and denies the Jewish people's right to self-determination. So how is anti-Zionism antisemitic? Well, first of all, most Jews in America are Zionists. And anti-Zionism is the belief that Jews among all the people of the world do not have a right to self-determination or that the Jewish people's religious and historical connection to Israel is invalid, which is inherently bigoted. When Jews are verbally or physically.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
I do see one more hand raised.
Okay, thank you.
And right as I said that, another one was raised.
Okay, I believe that we stop at 15 minutes and my tally shows we can do one more speaker. Correct me if I am wrong. Six, eight, 10, 12. It looks like we can take both speakers.
Okay.
It'll put us over by one minute, but within the 15, close. Thank you.
Okay. Hillary, please go ahead. Hillary, please go ahead. Hillary, you may need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Yes, I am calling in to urge the city not to adopt Gaza as a sister city to Arcata. Gaza is currently at this time controlled by a terror organization, Hamas. We should not be having a sister city with an organization that is designated terror organization. I do hope that one day in the near future Gaza will be run by a legitimate municipality and then that might be the proper time, but right now is not the time and all it would do is signal that Arcata is anti-Zionist. Hamas stands for the destruction of Israel. Do not adopt Gaza as a sister city at this time. Thank you.
Okay, one more.
Chad, please go ahead. You may need to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm also against the sister city. I think there's no future peace without both Israeli and Palestinians coexisting. And a sister city relationship with only one side of this conflict stands to further strain relations between these groups. The leadership of Gaza, which is predominantly supported by its population, is known for human rights abuses and participating in a sister city program is tantamount to endorsing those practices. There's also a lack of tangible outcomes because of the ongoing tragedy of humanitarian organizations like UNRWA contributing to efforts to destroy Jewish sovereignty and money being funneled to jihad instead of peace, such as Doctors Without Borders who had admitted to emptying their coffers to the Hamas-run Gaza Ministry of Health. The previous decade Palestinians had received more humanitarian aid than any refugee group in history and not one bomb shelter for civilians was built. We would all like our efforts to contribute to peace, I'm certain, but the people in Gaza who want peace, sovereignty and coexistence with their Jewish neighbors do not have a voice because of their leadership and a sister city proposal stands to empower their leaders instead of the people. While the majority of Gazans, according to most recent polls, support terrorism, instead of a divisive taking side sister city program, the best peace plan we should support should be inclusive to those who want peace on both sides. Instead of a sister city, we should ask how we can empower those Gazans who are willing to accept Jewish sovereignty without alienating the Israelis who want the same for its Arab neighbors. Those all, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that will bring us to our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Item A, approve the minutes of city council meeting, December 12th, 2024. B, approve the minutes of city council meeting of December 18th, 2024. C, bi-weekly report on disbursements. D, approve a memorandum of agreement between the city of Arcata and Central de Pueblo for management and operations of the Bayside Park Farm and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. E, approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Arcata and Friends of the Arcata Marsh, extending the term to an additional five years to December 21st, 2030 and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. F, approve an amended agricultural lease extension through December 31st, 2026 with Scott Sterner doing business as North Bay Shellfish for a portion of the tied and submerged land in Arcata Bay. G, adopt resolution number 245-29 authorizing examination of sales or transaction use tax records. H, adopt resolution number 245-28 transferring all management functions and assets of the Arcata and Mad River Transit System services, including dial-a-ride to Humboldt Transit Authority and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And finally, item A, approve the purchase of Badger Remote Read Water Meters from Pace Supply for $306,016. Authorize city engineer to increase purchasing amount by $30,602, which is 10% for a total of $336,618. Authorize city manager to sign necessary agreements and documents. Would any council member or staff like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Okay. Motion is made by council member Meredith. Do I Matthews, do I have a second?
I will second it and then I do think there might be some folks to comment maybe on the calendar though.
Yeah, and I apologize.
But I also just want to with my second to say there's a couple items on here that are exciting, but especially that MOU for the Bayside Farm Park with Centro. And also just to give a shout out about how great their farm farm stand looks at the Sanctuary Garden that's new and up and running. So, well, not up and running, but completed looking. So I will second that consent calendar.
And I'm really looking forward to the collaboration of Bayside Farm and Central de Pueblo and also would like to thank our staff for their efforts in making this happen. So we have a motion.
I'm sorry, can the clerk clarify the motion?
Yes.
I know I heard accept.
The consent calendar.
Accept the consent calendar. I've just.
I'm moving to have members of the public next.
I'm just clarifying the motion that's on the floor. I heard you say accept, but typically the consent calendar is adopted. I just wanted to see that verbiage.
The whole consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Still seconded.
Okay. So do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on any of the consent calendar items? If so, please line up at the podium now or raise your hand on Zoom for public comment on the consent calendar items. Come on up.
Good afternoon, city council members, manager. I'm presenting here on behalf of the immigrant community that today received this great news. It's for us and for the next generations. It's for us and for everybody that is willing to start a new life in peace here in the United States, here in Humboldt County, Wildland. I'm here with Adán Cervantes, who has been our maestro or teacher at the Sanctuary Garden and here with the family of Centro del Pueblo. I'm here with this vitality of life. I am very happy and very honored that we can start this collaboration with other families, starting a cooperative of agricultural workers that have learned through the Sanctuary Garden to reconnect with the land and to heal through the land, to plant food that we use to incorporate to our diets, to plant medicine and to see peace, a lot of peace. I want to also thank all the community that is keeping calm. Yesterday was. Yesterday was a big rumor spread about ICE being in Humboldt. We have verified every site with every location, and this is a rumor, fortunately, it's a rumor. However, we need to prepare for what is coming, and we are setting protocols to verify all the information. Having said that, I want to say that you are partnering with an organization that is on top of the concerns of this community, because we live, we live our rights and we exercise them every day. And I want to invite Maestro, if you want to say something. Si quiere decir algo en español y yo traduzco sobre este nuevo trato que se acaba de aceptar para Centro del Pueblo y la granja.
Hola, mi nombre es Adán Cervantes. Me da gusto saber que este nos tienen confianza en poder trabajar la granja, y este esperamos darlo mejor para el pueblo.
Hello, my name is Adán Cervantes. I'm very glad to hear that you trust us, and we are just going to provide best of our efforts to this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisbeth Cano Sánchez. A lot of the community knows me as Luna, and I'm just here to say thank you and just take a moment to say thank you for the great improvement of the project for Centro del Pueblo and the Bayside Farm. I just want to say that this is a big thing, positive thing, for the youth. There's just a lot of things that happen in our day-to-day life, and having a space like the Sanctuary Garden to go and be able to reconnect with the roots is really important. So I can't wait to see how much more youth we're going to get into our spaces, how much more they're going to be impacted in a positive way. It is really awesome, and I can't wait to just share with more community members. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Luna. Is there anyone else? Otherwise, I am going to move on to... Oh, I thought we just did.
No, there's no hands raised.
We did the motion, though, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bear with me, my first time. All right, so that will bring us to appoint one member to the Planning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2027. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to work with Amanda. I've seen her speak many, many times and do presentations. I think she is so knowledgeable, and I couldn't imagine a better asset to the Planning Commission. So I would love to appoint Amanda Hinkie to the Planning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2027, and thank you so much for being willing to serve. And I will second that, and thank you, Amanda. You interviewed great and seem very qualified, and I look forward with working with you on the commission. Thank you.
And I concur, and I am super excited about your participatory action research skills that you're going to be bringing to the table, as well as your education. I'm impressed. So yes, we are excited. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome.
Yeah, it would still be good to open that up to public comment if there is a comment.
Okay, so we are opening that up to public comment. So step up to the podium if you would like to make public comment on the appointment of our newest planning commissioner opening. Going once? Anyone? Okay. So then that will bring us to Item B: Consider city council salary adjustment and the introduction of Ordinance Number 1574, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title II, Administration, Chapter One, Council Section 2010, salaries of the city council members. Can we have a staff report from Human Resources and Administrative Services Director Kiravink, please?
Yeah, good evening. After each election, the council has the opportunity to, according to government code and our municipal code, to review their salaries for a potential increase. The increase can be 1% to 5%, or it could be based on cost of living, which is currently averaged a little more than 3%. In the past history of the increases, they have been at 5% per year since the last increase. So in this particular situation, it would be 89 something, 84.95 per month would be the increase if the council members would like to follow past practice and do the 5% per year. Are there any questions?
I have questions, but I have a comment. I don't think that any of us up here serve on the council for the money, the very, very little amount of money that there is. That being said, between our JPA assignments, all the extra meetings we do, emails, I feel like last year when I served as mayor, I most, a lot of weeks, I averaged about 30 hours a week just doing city council business, which I think maybe averages to maybe less than 50 cents an hour. So, I mean-
Yeah, and the purpose of the increases is not necessarily for the current council members. The increases also represent an opportunity for others to get involved in public service and be compensated in a manner that they could do so and, you know, still afford to their living.
And that's a really good point. I think, you know, I have a full-time job, I think all of us do, and we're very lucky and privileged to be able to serve on the council, and, you know, I think it's our goal to be equitable and have diversity on the council, and it's not a lot of people that can actually afford to have this as a job, so.
Right, so it would increase from 49.51 per month to 9.3446 per month if a motion was made to do the increase at 5% per year.
Okay, and so unless I have other questions or comments from council, do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item? Step up to the podium.
Good evening. I don't have an issue with the raise from the standpoint, I mean, I recognize for someone who's been here like two and a half years, that you put a lot of time into it, you have a lot of committees, you know, these PDFs that are sometimes 300 long, you know, to be knowledgeable in those subjects, so I have no problem with that. The issue that I have is as far as ethics and due diligence, and I'll give you an example from that standpoint, when I was here probably five months ago, six months ago, and we had second to last, the second before the last final vote on the gateway, we had Mayor White tonight actually try to read the letter from the Arcata Fire District, and we had several members of our council actually try to block her from reading that document, which was a very important document, from, so that our fire chief and, you know, the fire department could express their opinion about the gateway, and you, I mean, it just was incredible to see that you tried to stop that from happening. And I'd also bring up the final vote of the gateway. Again, we had Councilmember White, who brought up some issues with the fact that nothing had been worked out with the fire district. I mean, you had two and a half years to meet with them in this chamber, and you never did that. You just waited to the last moment, had a little meeting with them, and were really surprised on, you know, their position. So when she brought this up, why can't we wait just a little bit longer from the standpoint of holding off on the vote? Then we saw our former city manager and the lawyer jump in there and push back on that, so-
Could I just ask for, being new at this, I'm wondering if we need, are we on topic? Because that's the question, is it needs to be related to council salaries, or is this in line? I just want to check.
Well, it is performance, so, I mean, that's a broad subject, so, you know, it's just a very broad, I mean, from the standpoint, you, I mean, I ran for office, and we have laws, and we're supposed to uphold those laws, and you know darn well that for the last two years that I've tried to get you to, you know, even say to our city manager, enforce the law, and you couldn't do it. So, I mean, that's part of your performance, part of your law, your job of doing that, and I brought this up a number of times, so that's why I have to say I'm very disappointed, and I'm not sure about rewarding you from that standpoint when you failed in those areas.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other folks who would like to make public comment?
I don't see any hands on Zoom.
Nothing on Zoom? Okay, so-
Just another great thing about being a council member is that we learn a lot of rules, about Rosenberg's rules and the Brown Act, and how we're not supposed to, you know, have ex parte communications and be reading emails during a meeting, and actually know those rules and act on them when we see things that are not kosher during meetings. And we've learned a lot over the years about that. So I think, you know, I don't know which direction, if you guys want to go with 5%, I'm happy with the COLA as well, you know, 3.12, this is, I think, the first year in a while that we've seen a COLA that's under 5%, so, but I don't know what direction folks want to go with that. But happy to support on either.
So I'm looking for a motion? Is that a motion?
Nope.
No. Okay.
I made a lot of motions tonight. Well, I'm just like asking, like, which direction are we guys going, like, a little discussion here? Do we want COLA? Do you want the full 5%? What do we want?
What's the difference between, like, the COLA and the 5%?
I think the, you know, the precedent setting, you have a past practice of the 5%. And to deviate from that, you know, sets a new precedent, which could be the cost of living adjustment, it could be, you know, more, but historically, it's been less than 5%. And I think the past practice has been 5% per year.
Thank you for that historical context. So I will make a motion to, okay, this is, it's slightly different now, so I have to find the right language, but, okay, so I will make a motion for the 5% increase and introduce Ordinance Number 1574, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending Arcata Municipal Code to adjust council member's salary, Title II, Administration, Chapter One, Council, Section 2010. Wave reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Sarah Schaefer, and a second from Councilmember Meredith Matthews. So if there, we did discussion, I guess I take a vote?
Yes.
So to that, I wanted to also say it has been a huge learning curve for me, so thank you for everyone putting up, and as I learned with you all, probably broke a few rules tonight, so next time I'll do better. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so motion passes, and so can we go to Ordinance Number 1576, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending Arcata Municipal Code regulations relating to purchasing procedures, Title II, Administration, Chapter Four, Fiscal Administration. Can we have a staff report from Finance Director Tabitha Miller, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, or actually Vice Mayor in place of the Mayor and City Council. So the proposed ordinance Number 1576 updates the existing purchasing procedures to reflect the recommendations of the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Commission, which is tasked with reviewing the formal bid limits every five years, looking at inflation and other financial factors, to determine if changes should be made. So consistent with Assembly Bill 2192, which was signed by the governor and would be effective on 1/1/2025, the ordinance would make some increases or changes in thresholds. The first one is it increases the threshold for bids for equipment, materials, and supplies from $60,000 to $75,000. It also increases the values for professional consultant contracts, services contracts. It allows the city manager to negotiate and approve contracts up to $75,000 instead of $60,000. The city manager may also negotiate contracts for professional consultant services between $75,000 and $220,000, but the city council must actually make the formal award of that contract. And then contracts above the $220,000 must be awarded through a request for proposal or a request for qualification normal process. And finally, the third increase it does is it changes the threshold for informally bid public projects. It also increases it to $75,000 or less that can be awarded by the purchasing agent. The purchasing agent happens to also be the city manager, and anything greater than $75,000 must be awarded by the council again. So pretty straightforward, those were included in your packet, and this is introduction.
Thank you, Tabitha. So do we have any questions or comments from council? All right, then I guess we would be looking for a motion? Oh, public comment, of course. Do we have public comment? Please step up to the podium if you would like to comment on the ordinance for city council amending the municipal code relating to purchasing procedures. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, so then we would be looking for Sarah, Mike Eden.
I got to the microphone first. Yeah, I will make a motion to introduce ordinance Number 1576, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to purchasing procedures, Title II, Administration, Chapter Four, Fiscal Administration. Wave reading of text and consent to read by title only.
I'll second.
Aye.
Can the clerk get a quick clarification on that? We just have to include the full formals.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata.
Thank you.
God, I really thought I could skip that part, okay.
All right, so now we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passed. Looks like that will bring us back then to oral communications. City council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium, please raise your hand. If you are on Zoom or webinar or press star nine now if you are on the phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Please step on through.
Hello, my name is Susan Parsons. I am here to vehemently oppose city council creating a sister-city relationship with Gaza City. Sister cities are established when two functioning municipalities, usually following an exchange of visits, identify shared common values and wish to support cultural exchange events and visits. Regarding Gaza, there is Gaza City, there is no functioning municipality, no representative of Arcata has even visited Gaza City, it's difficult to find commonalities between our two communities, or to understand why such a unilateral declaration would be made. What moral message would you be giving the Jewish people of Arcata after October 7th that you would support Hamas? Hamas is a terrorist organization. Hamas is the ruling authority of Gaza. It is illegal for any American town to transfer money to any terrorist organization. FATA declared a few days ago that they won't have anything to do with Hamas. Why should Arcata? Gaza is controlled by terrorists. We do not want to do business- Gaza is controlled by terrorists, we do not want to do business, we don't want to do business with terrorists, I hope. Um, I find, I'm just flabbergasted that, um, that this is a proposal that is being pushed forward, um, there's no way to control, if it were to, to go through, how would you make sure that my tax dollars and other people's tax dollars are not going to go into building a terrorist underground, which is then used to terrorize Israel and the Jewish people and take them captive for over four-hundred-and-seventy days?
Thank you for your comment. Next.
Okay, um, we've had fire in the news a lot lately with Los Angeles, and I'm going to like, you know, there's going to be a lot of attention on cities now, and, and I'm going to bring this back to what you, how you voted on the gateway from the standpoint in a very loose way that was against the fire district's wishes, and first of all, I want to say that after that vote, we had a, we had a court ruling, uh, in the city just north of here, addressing the height of buildings, and, and also the judge wasn't, um, buying, you know, this kind of wishful thinking of how we can, uh, address, you know, firefighters over four stories and buildings, so you got a big, um, issue with that and that ruling, and it just, it just brings back to this point of how irresponsible this council was in that vote, and not working it out with the fire district, not sitting down, you know, I, I read their responses, and it's just pretty shocking how you never wanted to talk with them, you never wanted to work it out, you just had a deadline, it seemed like from our previous, uh, city manager to get it done right before she left. We never even had those extra meetings that I believe that the second to last meeting that you expressed, you canceled a number of meetings, and we unfortunately didn't have this, so it, this is going to come back and, uh, it's going to have to be addressed, and it's just unfortunate the, the direction and how you conducted yourselves. I'd also say that I'm not going to spend my time, you know, coming to the council members and, and trying to work out different issues, and I, I brought up to some pretty serious issues as far as laws that have not have been addressed, and I'm just going to be working with the state of California, and I mean, I already went to them once, and it, it just kind of was embarrassing to see how our city manager and our police actually responded by doing something, and I happened to be just running for office at the same time, and I saw him do this, and I go, are they really going to just do this for show? And then I'm never going to see him, it's just going to go back to like, nothing, and unfortunately, that's what's happened, so it's just a completely waste of time to come here, and for anyone, I would say this, to like, try to work things out with the city because you're not interested in working out problems, whether it's annual reports on safety or, you know, noise or, you know, any kind of pollution, it's basically, you just like, pass it through and you don't take it seriously, and you're, you're actually not telling the truth, so my time is going to be spent with the state of California who believes in these laws and not dealing with, with you guys because it hasn't worked, so I'm sorry to say that, but that's the way it is.
Thank you for your comment. Next.
Good evening. My name is Cole Germaine. Uh, I moved to Arcata almost two years ago. I work from home and my partner is a graduate student at the university, uh, so we're able to be a household with low car use, and we usually get around town walking or biking. In my time in Arcata, I've noticed that a small but impactful share of drivers do not follow the law when it comes to pedestrians. I've had multiple instances where I'm crossing the street in broad daylight at marked crosswalks clearly visible to drivers, and they have not stopped to allow me to cross. In one instance, a driver even changed lanes to drive past me rather than stopping while I was in the middle of crossing. While my experiences are anecdotal, the data shows that Arcata really is a dangerous city for pedestrians. In twenty-twenty-two, the most recent year where data is available, the California Office of Traffic Safety reports that Arcata saw fourteen crashes involving pedestrians, putting the city fifth out of a hundred and four similar-sized cities in California. In that same year, Arcata was only fifty-third on that list for total accidents, suggesting that crashes involving pedestrians are disproportionately common in the city. Solutions exist to protect pedestrians. One step is increasing visibility of crosswalks and pedestrians using them. California law now prohibits parking within twenty feet of a crosswalk, and Arcata should take this opportunity to increase daylighting of crosswalks to make pedestrians more visible and shorten crossings for safety. Recent research by the Minnesota Department of Transportation has found that the presence of crosswalk markings and visible signs strongly correlates with drivers yielding to pedestrians. But visibility is not enough. That same research found that vehicles traveling twenty-five miles per hour or faster were significantly less likely than slower-moving vehicles to yield to pedestrians. The San Francisco Police Department also demonstrated the limits of visibility, uh, as a solution last year when officers wore inflatable chicken costumes while crossing the street as part of a pedestrian safety initiative. The officers found that even with the bright costumes on, many drivers still failed to yield. Arcata should take more action to enforce the laws protecting pedestrians while also working to slow drivers down to safer speeds in the city. This should include adding raised crosswalks and speed bumps, narrowing streets, and consider converting one-way streets like G and H Streets to two-way. I'll end with one more anecdote. On April Fool's Day last year, the group Vision Zero Vancouver announced a new initiative to provide fake bricks to pedestrians to hold while crossing dangerous intersections to encourage drivers to yield. While a humorous demonstration of the power imbalance between drivers and pedestrians, I should not have to threaten violence on other drivers to ensure my own safety. Arcata has the potential to be a safe, vibrant, walkable city, and I hope you will take action to support that vision. I will be emailing each of you a copy of my statement tonight along with the date I referenced, and would be more than happy to discuss more with you at any time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next.
Hi, good evening. It is a relief to many of us in the community that a ceasefire will go into effect soon, but the future governance of Gaza has not been determined yet, and as long as Hamas is in charge, a sister-city relationship will not be possible. The State Department will not allow it as Hamas is a U.S.-designated terror organization. Considering this City Council, please do not pursue a sister-city arrangement unless security and political conditions in Gaza improve. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no more in-person public comment, do we have folks on Zoom?
Yes, Allison, please go ahead.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I have to say that your two speakers against the sister-city proposal with Gaza were quite eloquent, and I also wanted to point out that, um, this is part of a national initiative led by terrorist-supporting organizations like Jewish Voice for Peace and American Muslims for Palestine. You can go to, uh, WWW, Sister Cities for Palestine dot org, and there's a toolkit, much like the Tendefatas and the ceasefire resolutions. The purpose of this initiative is to weaponize our sympathy for civilians in a war zone governed by a terrorist organization, Hamas. All donations support terrorism at this point, as a matter of fact, they're hijacking the, um, food, uh, given by COVID, um, COGAT, um, and selling it to support Hamas, um, but donations to terrorism is against the law. If you read carefully, there's always an intent to boycott, divest, and sanction Israel, um, in a war that's defending itself against a genocide by Hamas, and there are many states that refuse to do business with entities that practice BDS against Israel so that it's bad for the city. We hope that with the ceasefire, that Hamas will release the hostages and stop firing rockets at Israel so that the lives of Gazan can improve. This war will end when Hamas does this and promises not to kill Jews and Israelis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I also want to speak out against the concept of, uh, establishing a sister-city with, uh, any town under the control of Hamas. Hamas not only is a terrorist organization, but they follow doctrines which have to do with jihad and the concept of martyrdom. As terrible as the Nazis were during the World War Two, they allowed their civilian population to use shelters to shield them from American bombs and Russian artillery. In the case of Hamas, the elaborate tunnels that have been built have not been allowed for the civilian population. Uh, this is consistent with the idea of martyrdom, and the more civilians that are killed, it is apparent that it strengthens the hand of Hamas propagandists. In London, when, uh, jihadists blew up buses, they said, "We love death as you love life." And this concept of martyrdom is consistent with the genocidal and insane policies of Hamas. We should not establish a sister-city with them ever.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else waiting on Zoom?
No, there's, oh, sorry, I just missed one, um, there is one hand on Zoom. Jimmy La, please go ahead.
Um, hi, I wasn't going to, even planning on speaking, um, I'm one of your local Palestinians. Um, I'm just kind of flabbergasted at the complete idiocy that just continues to be spewed in this chamber. Um, we need to actually confront like a really painful truth here for people. Propaganda, fear-mongering, emotional manipulation have impaired the critical thinking of millions of people around the world, and certainly in this town. Zionist narratives reduce the Palestinian struggle for freedom to terrorism, but these claims actually falter under scrutiny. Um, you can actually read Hamas's charter for yourself on JewishVirtualLibrary.org. I'm just speaking, um, just as a factual place, I'm not trying to be pro-Hamas by any means, but, um, the, the stated objectives are actually not to kill Jews, but to resist Zionism and colonization, and its charter explicitly infirms that its struggle is political and it's not religious, and it's aimed at ending oppression regardless of the oppressor's race, religion, or nationality. Um, and they state it in their Article Twelve, which actually speaks to the fact that the Palestinian cause is a cause of an occupied land and displaced people. Article Nine even further goes on to emphasize that this is an injustice, again, irrespective of religion, race, gender, or nationality, the same struggle against the Crusaders and the Tartars, which is completely entirely disconnected from Judaism as a religion. And propaganda thrives and spreads like wildfire, so I would just like to encourage people to pick up a book, if you don't want to hear it from Palestinians, uh, read Ilan Pape, who's an Israeli historian, um, just want to throw that out there. Uh, let's exercise our critical thinking skills, um, uh, so you don't actually just, uh, lose this ability to think freely for yourself, because in this case, you are less free than the people of Gaza who are living under a brutal occupation that is illegal under international law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
There's no more hands raised.
Okay, so, um, I'm not sure protocol, but I just wanted to see if I might make an announcement in response to one of the speakers on pedestrian safety, there is a community workshop, Fuente Nuevo Charter School will be having one on Wednesday, the twenty-second, from five-thirty to seven PM, that's at seventeen-thirty James Road. It's an opportunity for you to share your ideas for safer walking and cycling, as well as safe routes to school. So again, that's next Wednesday, five-thirty to seven PM at Fuente Nuevo Charter School, which then will be bringing me to future meetings, so there, um, that, schedule a study session with the committee and commission chairpersons for February twelfth, twenty-twenty-five at five PM in the council chamber. So we are good to go, and I would like, if I could, um, adjourn our meeting then with a moment of silence in honor of our late President Jimmy Carter. And this meeting is adjourned.